So we stand for our pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a very good evening to all of us on behalf of our president tonight who's absent and at work. Welcome to our regular meeting tonight Pike Township MSD, February 13, 2025. Meeting has been called to order and now we will move on for the good of the cause. If there's any patron who'd like to come and speak on behalf of the cause and it is good, we give you this time, three minutes, state your name. Very familiar face. Let's give it up for Mr. Former President, I mean former board member Matt Hop.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Webster, Dr. Young, members of the board. I'm going to put my best preacher hat on tonight. My name is Matt Hop. I'm a proud Pike dad and an art and public education supporter. I'm going to talk about a whole rash of bills that are working through the Senate and the House, and then I'm going to ask you all for a favor. So Senate Bill 1 is going to cost Pike and many, and every other school district in this state millions of dollars in revenue that supports our infrastructure.
Right.
Lowering property taxes isn't a bad thing, but not replacing the money is. Just telling school districts to figure it out isn't the answer, especially when Indiana is also cutting state income tax. We're sitting on a multi-billion dollar surplus in our rainy day fund. It's raining. House Bill 1501, it's a pilot program to force public school districts to support transportation needs of charter and private schools. This doesn't impact Pike yet, but you know it will as Bob Baining keeps chipping away at our ability to support our students. His goal is by 2029, the state would force consolidation of these services, taking away all that we have built and putting it under a different authority. School Bill 287, or sorry, Senate Bill 287 is partisan school boards. It's going to happen. It's been coming for a long time. If not this year, it's going to happen soon. Forcing school board candidates to declare a party doesn't make us stronger, doesn't make other districts stronger, it's just designed to further divide us. House Bill 1136, I know we all have heard this one, takeover of IPS and four other districts to be under total control of charter boards. Completely removing local control and input from the community as to who's responsible for the success of the schools and the education of our students is not the right answer. People ask me if I'm mad at parents who use vouchers or send their kids to charter schools. No, I'm not really. Those parents are doing what they think is best for their children. My anger, my disappointment is with the governor, the legislature, our mayor, the city county council, especially Leroy Robinson, Carlos Perkins, and Maggie Lewis. They're letting us down. They seem focused on bringing charters too and increasing vouchers here in Pike. Follow the money is almost always the right answer and definitely is in this case. Education should not be a business. It is not about an immediate return on a monetary investment. It's about a return over time on investment in each student. It's about building students ready to become members of our society and helping them be the best versions of themselves. The return on investment takes 20, 30, or 40 years, not measured in how much did we make this year. I'm becoming more philosophical as we struggle through these times. I'm going to paraphrase and borrow from Martin Niemoller. First, they came for IPS and I did not speak out because I'm not an IPS. Then they came for Gary and I did not speak out because I'm not Gary. Then they came for Washington, for Wayne, they're even coming for Carmel in Zionsville. And then they came for Pike and there was no one left to speak for us. So my call to action, we, the Pike community, need you, the board, to rally around public education. I know many of you are out in the community raising awareness, bringing attention to the plight of public education. I'd invite you to join the effort Monday afternoon, President's Day, this next Monday at the State House for the Indiana State House Day of Action, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., Second Floor atrium. I implore you to keep fighting this fight. These are the times and in the future, we're going to look back and see who is on the right side of history. We know we are. We need to push back on the powers that be. I appreciate your time and thank you for your commitment to the students and families of Pike.
Is there anyone else for the good of the cause? Thank you, Dr. Hop.
Hello. My name is Lawrence Turner. I'm a school bus driver at Pike and have been for the past 10 years, 11 years. I'm going into my 12th year because I just finished my 12th physical. This is over my retirement, all right? In looking forward to retirement, as I got close to the period of retirement, I addressed Mr. Gilmore about the retirement, which I have a letter here that he presented to us to discuss that. In my presence with my brother, who was taping the conversation, I don't know, there was two other ladies with him, he knows who they are, and we went over that situation, if you care to see the letter that he had, that he gave to us. After that, at the other school board meeting that was held, they told me, it says, Dr. Hunter, who was a human resource person, I believe, just as Mr. Gilmore is, said that they were aware of the situation. And all of that, they said, well, we're going to come, we're going, we're aware, we're going to look into it and take care of it. What they did is take care of it, is offer me $5,000 one-time payment for all the years of service I put in there as a driver, but even if it was seven years, eight years, $5,000, I doubt if anyone here would think that's acceptable for a one-time payment for a person that put dedicated itself to driving your students around here and making sure they got to suit them safe, on time, and everything else. I rescind both of those offers, okay? Now, I think what would be a more appropriate order, offer, would be, like my lawyer said, $15,000 one-time payment and I can walk away from here clean. Now, if anybody wants to see what I have here, oh, in addition to that, they brought it up the PERC program. PERC told me, and I got it from them, and I got the documents here, that they only dedicated three years into that program. I showed all my yellow cards to the persons that were concerned so they'd know exactly what was going on with that. If anybody here can deny what I'm saying here, they need to stand up and say they deny it. That's all I got to say. And don't doubt my resolve. I'll be at every school meeting, every school board meeting until this thing is resolved.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Is there anyone else for the good of the cause? No one else for the good of the cause? We move on to Spotlight on Pike, Sarah Dorsey.
Good evening. It's wonderful to see you all again. I'm going to paraphrase what I heard Dr. Moore say, and that's public education is working in Pike.
Yes.
We have so much to be proud of. Our Pike Career and Stimp Center hosted its first middle school career fair at Guyan Middle School on January 30th. Our Guyan students were given amazing race clues to determine which of our 22 career pathways to visit. All 22 pathways were represented by our CTE ambassadors who shared their student experience and provide our eighth graders with an opportunity to engage in a hands-on activity from their program curriculum. The event was so successful that they're going to replicate it at our other middle schools. So that's an exciting thing that they just launched and a great way to make sure our eighth graders know about the opportunities available to them at Pike High School. As I'm sure you all know, last Saturday was an especially incredible day to be a Red Devil, for so many reasons. Our Pike High School Performing Arts Department did a wonderful job hosting Music Fest. Our Lady Red Devils became back-to-back sectional champions. Our Pike High School Girls Swimming and Diving Team had an outstanding showing at their sectional competition where they won the Team IHSAA Swimming and Diving Sectional Runner Up and celebrated several relay and individual highlights, including multiple state qualifications. Coach Charles Grace was named the IHSAA Sectional 13 Coach of the Year, and we had a wrestler place third in regional and qualified to compete at SMY State. In addition, at Guyan Creek Elementary School, our investigators won the Build Award in their Vex Robotics Competition in Zionsville, and because of their score in the skills competition, they qualified to advance to state, so they'll be going to state on March 22nd. We want to sincerely thank the donors listed on this evening's agenda, Alice Davis, the Pike Township Educational Foundation, and the Salvation Army for their generous support. And last but not least, we'd like to wish Emmanuel the best of luck at wrestling SMY State, our girls' swimming luck at state, and our Lady Red Devils' success in regional, in their regional game on Saturday.
Thank you, Sarah Dorsey. We're on to reports to the Board Superintendent Above and Beyond recognition, Mr. Eric Elmore.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Young. I have the honor, honor of introducing Mrs. Graham, the principal of Deer Run Elementary School, as she presents the Superintendents Above and Beyond Award.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. I am Ramika Graham. I'm the principal at Deer Run Elementary, and this is my assistant principal, Lauren Holliday. Today, we are here to recognize one of our kindergarten teachers. This year brought exciting growth to our kindergarten team, expanding us to five sections, including two new teachers, one team member that was going to go on maternity leave. During this transition, Ms. Anya Hart went above and beyond demonstrating exceptional leadership and dedication. She led grade-level meetings, created a comprehensive Canvas course to support the substitute in our added kindergarten class, and provided invaluable assistance to students who needed support in the other class while their teacher was out. For yet another teacher who was new to the team, she ensures that a student receives sensory breaks, thoughtfully preparing materials for the team. Beyond the classroom, Ms. Hart serves as one of our equity facilitators, further showcasing her commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment for both students and colleagues. Thank you, Ms. Hart, for your hard work, your flexibility, your compassion, and your leadership. You truly make a difference at Deer Run. Ms. Anya Hart.
Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Young, please join me in welcoming Dr. Tappler, the principal of Lincoln Middle School, who will introduce the Lincoln Middle School Above and Beyond Award recipient.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. We would like to acknowledge Ms. Alana Waldrop, sixth-grade social studies teacher, as the recipient of the Superintendent's Above and Beyond Award. Ms. Waldrop is a solid educator and a solid leader within our school building. She currently serves as one of our grade-level leaders and lead facilitator of our school Equity Council. Ms. Waldrop possesses three special attributes that complement her leadership, her character, and commitment to excellence at Lincoln Middle School. The first attribute is that Ms. Waldrop is consistent. This attribute is reflected in her strong work ethic, she is visible in our building, and she fully engages our students in and outside of the classroom setting, and upon entering her classroom, she is always, and I mean always, prepared to help her kids learn. Even when she is away from the building, she puts things together to make sure that her kids are always prepared to learn. Her students are aware of what they're learning, and they are often exposed to exercises designed to increase engagement, and regardless of the day or situation, she is a reliable resource, and she demonstrates high levels of engagement. She can work through challenging situations while she maintains this great poise and optimism. The second attribute is that she is emotionally intelligent. She understands how to read her classroom and staff when presenting information, and as an equity, a lead equity facilitator, she can carry courageous conversations with her colleagues when creating an awareness of equitable instructional practices and advocating for social justice, and she's strong in that area very much. Students grow and connect with her, with her instruction. She builds positive relationships with her clients and makes more, excuse me, makes content more relatable and of high interest. She captures students' strengths and needs due to her desire to genuinely know them and mold them for success, and she is a true asset to the overall growth of her students. The third attribute is that Ms. Waldrop is dedicated. She is unwavering in her commitment to the work accomplished at Lincoln Middle School. She develops innovative lessons and creates time to support our learners' unique needs, and she pushes herself, at times going beyond the curriculum, to engage her students. And she also demonstrates a commitment to education by serving as a model for her peers regarding instructional leadership and delivery. Consistency, emotional intelligence, and dedication are attributes reflected in Ms. Waldrop's work performance, and this award is a testament to the countless lives she has touched and the difference that she makes every day. We are blessed to have Ms. Alana Waldrop as a member of our team at Lincoln Middle School. Ms. Alana Waldrop.
And finally, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Young, I have the honor of introducing Ms. Coleham, the Director of Exceptional Learners, as she presents two Superintendents Above and Beyond Awards.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Young. I am absolutely thrilled to be here tonight with our assistant director as well to present the Superintendent's Above and Beyond Award to two outstanding members of our Exceptional Learners Department. These two individuals consistently go above and beyond, and I've witnessed their dedication firsthand. I want to share two brief stories that highlight their extraordinary contributions. Last year, one of our schools received a call from a parent preparing to enroll her son. We learned he had a serious medical condition that limited his mobility, and the full extent of this became clear during their school visit. Our physical therapist, Molly Kelly, immediately stepped up navigating a very complex process involving Riley Hospital, countless hour, after-hours efforts, and extensive collaboration with the family and the school staff. Thanks to Mrs. Kelly's tireless work, this student is not only attending his neighborhood school, but he is absolutely thriving. The second story features Modupe Osatelu. Mrs. Osatelu firmly believes that in order for mobility to be maintained, students have to be moving. Sounds like a simple concept, however, this can present a challenge at times with some of our students. Modupe encourages the students in a way that they often don't even realize that she has gotten them to move, making it fun and engaging. Additionally, you will regularly find Mrs. Osatelu taking time to work with staff to ensure that they fully understand how to integrate mobility into a student's regular school day. It is truly awe-inspiring to watch both of these ladies in action. Molly and Modupe, your dedication, compassion, and willingness to go the extra mile make a profound difference in the lives of our students and our families. You exemplify the true meaning of the Superintendent's Above and Beyond Award. Please join me in congratulating both Molly Kelly and Modupe Osatelu on this very well-deserved recognition.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eric Elmore, for that Superintendent Above and Beyond presentation. We're on to transportation update, Mr. David Holliday.
Good evening, Board Vice President Webster, school board members, and Dr. Young. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an update of the Pike Transportation Department. During this presentation, I will provide you with information as it relates to the current daily operations of the department, student ridership numbers, staffing, our training department, field trip support, and finally bus maintenance data, and also answer any questions that you may have regarding the department. The Pike Transportation Department is committed to supporting student achievement by providing a safe and efficient transportation system for the students that we serve. This is our commitment to our school community, and we strive to achieve this every single day. We truly understand that inside our buses, we are transporting our community's future leaders. When our children come to our schools, they share with us their future dreams and aspirations. Each of them has the ability to become future doctors, teachers, engineers, or master particular trades such as culinary arts and achieve in every possible career field of human endeavor. And as we all know, the, all of these careers must first go through K-12 education. So it is our department's commitment to make sure that we are, that we operate in a safe and efficient manner to transport our students to our Pike schools so that our students are able to achieve their future dreams. Our Transportation Department is actually a 16-hour day operation beginning at 5:00 in the morning with mechanics, office staff reporting to work, followed by drivers and monitors to get our day moving, with the day ending at approximately 9:00 p.m. During this timeframe, we are transporting students to school and back home using our three-tiered routing model, with our first tier being transporting our students to Pike High School, followed by our second tier, which are our elementary schools, well, seven of our elementary schools, and then our third tier, which are our three middle schools and two elementaries, which are pitched back in New Augusta South. We're also providing transportation for our half-day preschool students, transportation for our students that attend the Indiana Schools for the hearing impaired and visually impaired, as well as transporting students for midday field trips and after-school programming such as tutoring and after-school clubs and athletics. Each day, our department runs 90 bus routes, again utilizing this three-tiered routing system. In previous years, a district ran approximately 94 routes, but through reevaluating our routes, looking for efficiencies, and finding ways to consolidate routes, we were able to reach our current route count of 90. I would also like to add that this route count of 90 also includes five out-of-district routes. These out-of-district routes are in place to transport our Pike students that are temporarily displaced and living outside of our school boundaries. These students are identified for this service by our district's social workers and also through guidance by our district wellness coordinator, Mr. Jacob. Other information to share is that our drivers are making a total of 7,108 bus stops every single day. That's 3,554 in the morning and 3,554 in the p.m. And I actually did the math, but 90 routes, three tiers, our buses are averaging about 13 to 14 stops each run. It adds up, so 7,108 stops, bus stops every single day, making sure that they are done in the safest way possible for our students. They are also traveling 6,970 miles each and every day collectively, which equates to over 1.2 million miles traveled transporting our Pike students to school every single year. We currently have a fleet size of 144 buses, ranging in our large buses carrying 84 passenger, 84 passenger buses, to our medium-sized buses that hold 66 passengers, to our many buses that hold 15 passengers. This next slide provides three-year data on the number of Pike students that utilize or have utilized our transportation services for, again, over the past three years. We have seen a steady, steady increase in the number of students that we have transported over the last three school years. Currently, for the 24-25 school year, we are transporting 8,851 students. As you can see with the bar graph, we've increased our ridership by approximately 500 students each school year, with 7,845 students being transported during the 22-23 school year, followed by 8,389 students during the 23-24 school year, and again, 8,851 students being transported currently this school year. If we take into account Pike's current student enrollment of about 10,300 students, approximately 86% of our students are being transported on our Pike school buses. This next slide is about the people that actually make it happen for us, which are our outstanding bus drivers, monitors, our mechanics, and operational support staff. We currently have 98 drivers on staff, and our professional drivers are often the first and last Pike staff members, member a child sees each and every day. With a polite "good morning" or "hello," they help set the tone for a positive learning experience for our students, and they make up 63% of our transportation staff. Next, we have our bus monitors, who serve a very important role by providing an extra set of eyes on the school bus, ensuring student safety, and providing extra care and assistance for our students. We currently have 44 monitors on staff, making, making up 27% of our transportation staff. We also have seven diesel mechanics who work tirelessly to keep our buses in top condition, ensuring the safety and reliability of our fleet. And finally, seven office support staff members, including our secretaries, riding coordinators, dispatchers, field trip coordinators, lead CDL trainer, just to name a few, and they are the logistics, logistics experts of the department, and collectively serve as the communication link between our drivers and monitors, our schools, and our families. We have a training department within the Transportation Department, and many people may not know this, but actually Pike has another school in the district, and it is our Pike CDL Training School, and it's for those that aspire to become school bus drivers. And again, it's facilitated by our Pike Transportation Training Department. Since 2022, we have trained 15 people to become CDL school bus certified. This eight-week training program includes classroom instruction from the Indiana Department of Education, Transportation Department, and the Pike Transportation Training Department. It also includes over-the-road training that equips drivers with the skills and the knowledge necessary to operate a school bus both safely and responsibly. The classroom instruction covers topics such as traffic laws, vehicle operation, defensive driving, special needs training, such as wheelchair lift operation. The over, the road training provides trainees with real-world driving scenarios, as well as comprehensive training on passenger safety, including loading and unloading, emergency procedures, such as bus evacuation, and communication protocols with the Transportation Department. Other training provided by the Pike Transportation Department includes CPR and first aid training for all of our staff. We also provide crisis prevention intervention training, and this is training that teaches drivers and monitors how to safely manage difficult situations that may occur on a school bus, primarily focusing on ways to identify and de-escalate a crisis on the bus. This training has been provided to our staff through the support of our Pike Exceptional Learners Department and their certified crisis prevention intervention trainers, and last year, one of our own drivers completed their CPI certification to become a certified trainer, so we're going to provide this training, training for our staff in-house. Additionally, our department receives Stop the Lead training, which is facilitated through our, through support from our district's Wellness Department. This training teaches our staff how to treat more severe injuries until first responders arrive to a scene. And to my knowledge, in the state of Indiana, I believe, we're one of the few districts that offers both CPI training, which is crisis prevention intervention training, and Stop the Lead training to their transportation staff. One of the most exciting and fun responsibilities of the Transportation Department is the transporter of our students to field trips and extracurricular activities. There's nothing like seeing the joy and excitement of our students' faces as they, as they prepare to go on a field trip. During the 23-24 school year, the Transportation Department assigned 1,526 buses to support field trips or extracurricular activities. Through scheduling and planning with our classroom teachers, our department's goal is to extend the learning environment for our students beyond the traditional classroom setting. Examples of field trips that are scheduled include outings to the Indianapolis Zoo, the Children's Museum, the Pike Performing Arts Center, and even the Aquatic Center. We also transport students to locations outside of Marion County and even outside the state of Indiana for activities such as athletic competitions, performing arts... performing arts, ROTC, and robotics. We also assist with our district's after-school tutoring programs and after-school clubs by providing transportation home in the evening on our after-school extracurricular buses. By providing these services to our students, I believe our department plays an important role in broadening our Pike students' learning experiences and also by supporting our classrooms' teachers' learning objectives for their students. This slide provides data from the 2024 Indiana State Police Bus Inspection. And like I shared earlier, we have seven mechanics on staff that do a wonderful job maintaining our fleet. And every school bus in the state of Indiana is required to be inspected by the Indiana State Police. This is done annually. The inspections are crucial for ensuring the safety and reliability of school buses for the safe transport of our students. And these inspections typically involve checking various safety-related systems such as brakes, lights, tires, stoparms, steering, exhaust systems, emergency exits, just to name a few. This ensures that every school bus that is transporting students meets regulatory standards and are in good working condition. Based on the 2024 results, the MSD of Pike Township received 100% fleet readiness status after the inspection, which means that every bus in the fleet received a certification sticker from the Indiana State Police stating that they were roadworthy and safe to transport students. We're proud to say that in the last three years, we've achieved at least a 98% or higher in regards to our fleet readiness. And that concludes my presentation. I'd like to thank the board for this opportunity, Dr. Young, for this opportunity to share a little bit about the Pike Transportation Department. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions?
I just want to celebrate 100%. That is amazing, absolutely amazing.
And yet you're on CPI train. That's B+.
In my role before being on the board, coaching middle school softball, your bus drivers took us to all kinds of games. They took us on trips to visit college campuses with the girls. In six years, I can't think of one negative experience with them. They were all professional, so excellent. So thank you so much for your staff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I might just add a comment. It does my heart good every time I drive through the district and see those big yellow buses transporting our kids. Sometime it's over on Moore Road at the dairy, at the farm, yes. There's times I'll stop and I'll just take a look. And so it just really does my heart good to see our big yellow buses out there transporting our kids. Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Holly. All right, we are on to action items for this evening. First up is action item A, minutes of our Board of Education.
So move, President.
Second?
Been moved in second that we accept our minutes from our last board meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Minutes will be accepted from our last meeting. Next up is our Human Resource Report. Mr. Elmore.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Dr. Young, I ask that you approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Elmore. I would like to recommend, accept a motion or attain a motion, I'm sorry, attain a motion to accept our HR report as presented by Mr. Elmore with the exception of line item one to be discussed in a future executive session with the board. Tain a motion.
I move that we accept the human, I'm sorry, the HR report from Mr. Elmore exempting item one until we have an executive session.
Second?
Been moved in second that we accept our HR report from Mr. Elmore with the exception of line item one for a future executive board meeting. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you. And we're on to action items C and D combined. Mr. Greg Foster.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Dr. Young, I recommend approval of items C and D as presented.
All right, we've had the chance to look at these contracts and these renewals from item C and then the donations from item D. Motion is in order to accept.
So move, Mr. Vice President.
Second?
Been moved in second that we accept action items C and D as presented. Are there any questions on either item C or D? No questions, we are on to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Thank you, Mr. Greg Foster. We're on to board member items. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, let me thank Mr. Hop for coming tonight and expressing to this board the urgency of public education. He's done an outstanding job. He was with us at our church with a multiplicitate people talking about public education. And I think he sounds like an advocate of it. And I am as well, and I want to thank him for the reports and his knowledge of the bills
Absolutely.
that are before us. I would like to also thank the students of College Park for making sure we had flowers and a card representing a school board day. Want to thank those people and young people at College Park. You know, most schools in our district don't do things like that, and we want to thank College Park for doing that for us. And then I don't call the lady red devils. I call them the ladies in red and white. I don't believe our girls are devils. I just call them the ladies in red and white, and they're doing an outstanding job at representing our district as from an athletics standpoint. And back-to-back sectional championships in Ben Davis's gym is rather major to me.
Absolutely.
And so I just want to make that clear.
I hear you, Doc.
We can go to Ben Davis and whoop anybody. And it proved out for the last two years.
I hear you, Doc.
It's working out. And so we want to thank the ladies who wear red and white for the work that they're doing and the coaching staff and for the work that they're doing. And it's just exciting to be a part of the Pike family
Yep.
at this particular time with things showing up and they're showing out. And let's continue to support these young people. And let's do our best to support this staff and to support this superintendent as he supports the staff to educate our children. I think that's what it's all about. And thank you again, Mr. Matt Hop. Is he still here?
Yeah.
For the work that you're doing outside of our board to inform our board. We thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Ms. Wilson, Mrs. Wilson.
Well, Ms. Pastor Moore said everything. I'm going to try to see what I can do. First of all, I take great pride in knowing that so many of our different athletes, swimming, even our middle school, are all doing fantastic and representing Pike. And that makes it even that much more to be a Pike family and be a part of Pike because we have those athletes out there representing us. And yes, we put a hurtin' on those people at Ben Davis. I was there. I was there for the this sectional, the last sectional, the state. So I take great pride in those girls in the red and white, the red girls and white.
Yeah, that's it.
So with that being said, I want to thank the members of the school board because they have been very patient and allowing me to grow with them and to learn with them and to make calls to them to understand what my role is. And as I grow with this team, I not only have had these guys, but I've had you, some of you out there that have been also good support for me. So I thank you for that. And then Anye, who has left. I coached her sister at New Augusta in basketball. And then Mudupe, I was firsthand on her active feet, active feet. Come in there. Are they on the bicycle? If they're not, where's their schedule at? So those things I'm a part of, and I truly want to say, being a part of Pike's family is one of the best things that anyone can be a part of.
Mr. Hofer?
All right, first of all, I do want to acknowledge and thank all of the recipients of the above and beyond award tonight. That was an impressive list, all of the things said about everyone. That's what you want and expect in your educators, and that was, they definitely set the bar, and that was awesome. Did have the opportunity, it's been a long two weeks, so early in the last two weeks to participate in the Indiana State Board Association new member training, the one with Tony, yeah. So it was a great opportunity, not only to learn more about what it is to serve on the board, but get to meet new board members from other districts. Even got to pick the brains of some, see some things that they're doing in their districts, and so it was fabulous. Had a wonderful time at Literacy Night at New Augusta North at NAPA. Ms. Whitcomb and her team did a great job putting that on, working through that, and so really appreciate everything they're doing. The girls' sectionals, I do have to say, first of all, you heard all the things Ms. Dorsey was saying went on Saturday. I felt like we needed to be cloned on Saturday. There was, you could have been so many places at once. And the girls winning the sectional was awesome Saturday, but I'll tell you what, that game Friday night, that was high school basketball. That was the atmosphere you want to be in. So that was phenomenal. Had a great time at the board retreat and definitely want to thank all of the donors. And Mr. Hop, you know I'll be there Monday because I think our wives have coordinated us riding together. So we're definitely going to be there with you Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Hofer. Mrs. Barnes?
I certainly want to, along with my fellow board members, congratulate and wish good luck to our girls' basketball team this weekend. I especially want to thank the Pike Township Education Foundation for the donations. It's a mighty long list, and those dollars add up. And I do ask that the community support the Pike Township Education Foundation with their event that's coming on March the 15th. It's Pike Treasures. The tickets are still available. The theme, if I'm not mistaken, is denim and diamonds. So pick out your fancy jeans and something sparkly and join us. We'd love to have you and to support our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes, Ms. Kelly.
They have really left the bottom. We've covered a lot. This has been a busy, busy two weeks. I do. So first, again, the students and everyone from College Park that recognized us for school board awareness month, thank you. The flowers and everything were very much appreciated. The above and beyond award recipients, I made my list, so I'm going to go down my list. Congratulations to them. Thank them. I thank them for their hard, hard work with all of our students and the dedication that they show to our district. I cannot not recognize our back-to-back sectional champs who did Friday night have us biting our nails, but they pulled it out. And it was good to see that game and see them really go for it. And then Saturday, they were pretty, I think we just kept coming, they're scrappy. They were like, I mean, that game, there were so many turnovers Saturday night, but anyway, I digress. Now I have to remember what I wrote on here. Okay, the donations, yes. All of those who have donated to our district that so that we can continue to provide the best and most quality education to our students, we are very much appreciative. I had written down about supporting treasures on March 15th. And then again, to remind everybody, on Monday, the 17th, 2 to 4, the State House to support public education. We are truly
A fight.
in a fight for public education, not just in our state, not just in our district, across the nation. And it's going to take everyone coming together to win this fight.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Ms. President?
Yes. Just before Dr. Young, go ahead.
Before Dr. Young comes, on the 20th, at our church, we're having a statewide meeting to talk about, one of the topics is going to be education. And so they're coming from all over the state, hopefully. We're preparing a lunch for them, so call our office there at the church to make sure you can get some meals, a meal on that day. So we're doing our best to try to support public education, and we're trying to go across the state. We don't want to end up like Gary. And I'm done with that.
Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Young?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Webster. Thank you, Dr. Hop, for being on the front lines of the fight. Thank you for sharing that information. In addition to congratulations to our above and beyond award recipients, I do want to thank our administrators. I know you all are busy, but just for you to take time to, just to write down a few kind words to those employees. I'm telling you, I know that means the world, and as I watch their faces coming up and to be recognized, that meant a great deal. So thank you for taking time to do that. Did have an opportunity on Wednesday to attend the Pike High School Annual Black History Convocation. Our student performers were outstanding. The guest speaker was Dr. Lasana Kazambe, who was just dynamic, just dynamic. Thank you to Mr. Wilkerson, Dr. Woods, that whole team that worked with our students and organized the guest speaker. It was just an amazing event, and our students are just amazing young men and young women and just students. The way they conduct themselves, it just feels like when I walk into the high school like a college campus. It really does. It's a place of higher learning, and we have young people that are serious about their future. And then finally, I just want to share that we met the deadline in submitting our Lilly Endowment Grant and the amount of $3.1 million. So our fingers are crossed to make sure that yes, everything was done appropriately, and that focuses on supporting our middle school students and our staff. So we should hear something back here soon. I'll keep the board up to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Young. And final closings, I want to express my gratitude and appreciation again to our board. And I always say that when you get a chance now to compare after two terms, we see the hunger and the learning. I know Mrs. Barnes have, I don't know if you have them tonight, but you have our points and all that as to where we are on our training. And so we are seeking, so that the community can know, to be a trained board, and we're shooting for excellence as board. So I'm grateful for that, that we are growing as a board. We had a wonderful retreat on Saturday, educational, and we're just grateful. I was down on Tuesday, and Dr. Alicia Johnson, she did speak to the legislators regarding these bills. And so we were down, and providence would have it, is that I arrived right at the time that she was speaking with a packed-out room, and they was not letting anyone else in. So I'm going to recognize me and said, Pastor Webster, you ought to be on the inside. And as I shared with Dr. Young earlier, it wasn't that I was, it would have looked like I was there with Dr. Alicia Johnson, but I wasn't. I was just there to hear the bill because we do know that it's detrimental in many ways to public education, and we want to do what we can to hear, to see who's who. And somebody said, oh, it was Dr. Hop. He just said it. He said, unfortunately, those who are not standing with us, you know, there's no harm in calling them to the table and sitting down with them and asking them, where are you at on this matter of education and where are you with us? So there's no harm or foul in doing that. And I think that it even was a suggestion in our board retreat that we hold. Dr. Hop, if you didn't know, it was already suggested in our board retreat that we hold a town hall to see where our elected officials are at as we tunnel through this matter of education and public education, which is so detrimental to the least and the less. So I'm just grateful. And on behalf of our board president, who was absent tonight, we're thankful and we're grateful for all that you have done. And Dr. Moore, we will try to get over and be a part of your event on the 20th and might And might you say, now, now I'll probably get thrown in the water for this one, but I was at the voting polls last year, the last time we were there, and one of the young students walked up to me and said to me, I heard you want to change the name from Red Devils to, and they went on to something else. And I literally said, well, I said to the student, I said, well, I said, unfortunately, I'm just one vote and one voice. I said, but I don't like the name Red Devils. I said, we should be more like Red Angels or Angels if we're going to be anything. Like to attain those, and that's the preacher and the pastor coming out of us when we say that. So y'all don't, don't hold us hostage to that. That's just our professionalism coming out. All right? Like to attain a motion to.
So move, Brother President.
Second?
All right, meeting adjourned.